And if somebody is speaking, if they're pleased, give them your respect and don't talk while they're trying to talk, and those of the council as well, give them the respect they deserve. First item of business is minutes. Has everybody had an opportunity to review the minutes from the previous meeting? Are there any corrections? If not, we'll entertain a motion to accept them.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved to second, to the seven minutes as stated. Take a vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries. Is there any mail that needs to be shared? Okay. Move on to the next item of business, county attorney, Chris.
Yes, President Winted asked me to look into the potential liability for a county having a known dangerous condition and not taking any effect to cure it. In this instance, we're talking about the highway garage. I think back in September, a report by engineer came in stating that the building was a danger. I talked with some people at the insurance company and pretty much, once you're put on actual notice of a potential liability and you don't do anything, that pretty much negates any defense you would have if a claim were to be made based on that known defect. It could also potentially lead to insurance trying to deny coverage, although that's not likely because this is a municipality. But in general, just in towards, if you have like, if there's a known defect and you don't take action to cure it or prevent, mitigate potential damages, your liability rises. Like, just an easy example would be if there's a hole in the ground, you can either mark it off or fill it up and make it no longer a defect, which could potentially cause injury. I just wanted to put the council on notice because President Winted asked me to explain just the liability of having a known defect that's under the control of the county.
There's been some guessing by some of us, and we're obviously not attorneys, as to what our risk of liability is or what can come back on us, and I just wanted Chris, since he is the attorney of one of the county, to publicly state what those are and what our potential risk is. So I wanted to make that known. Thank you, Chris. Anything else?
I'm just basically, the risk is just that if there is a claim, the defense is gone because it's been, there's actual notice that there is a defective building. That's pretty much what I think you guys should know about that situation.
Does anybody, if the council have any questions for Chris on that? Okay. Next business in order, to hear reports from the committees. Councilman Strong, do you have anything?
Well, we should have had a budget and finance committee meeting by now, but we haven't been able to. I thought last month that by now we would have a report ready to present on our financial performance for 2013. Due to the snow days and the sick days that Debbie's had, and along with her husband being in the hospital, we haven't had a chance to complete getting all the members together for our committee to actually have a meeting and make a formal presentation. And I had promised James last month, I think, that I would have that this month, but we're running behind on it. Let's attempt to do that yet this month, to have something on paper for everyone. I apologize for that. The weather and the flu and various other things have just caused too many problems with too many people, or maybe get everything together.
Thank you. Councilman Settle, do you have anything to add?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me, Mike, if I might.
Go ahead.
In Russ's absence, and again, I'll repeat and reiterate what Dale said, because of the weather and the snow days and orange alert days that we weren't supposed to be out on the roads. But I have put some preliminary information together and had discussion with Jim and Mark, both at a meeting that was held with the community corrections several months ago. And again, put some preliminary information together so that we can meet as a committee. And again, I thought we would be a little farther on with the weather. But hopefully, we can meet and have something for you, a recommendation for the next meeting.
Okay, thank you for the report. The next business in order is new business, first on the agenda, and we will make an addition to our agenda as well under new business. We'll slide in between.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Did we do unfinished business?
Yeah, there was nothing stated on the agenda, so.
Well, I made a note to myself.
Okay.
If you don't mind.
Go ahead.
At our last meeting, when we did council appointments, at that meeting, we had an appointment to make to the Fayette County Foundation Board. Does anyone remember that?
Yes.
And we didn't make an appointment.
I think that that was done already.
It was, I believe that Mark Bamer's.
Yes.
Term expired in January of 2014, and we wanted to speak with Anna at the foundation, and I think both Mike and myself, Mike has the information from them.
Yeah, Anna submitted me the paperwork or the email last month, and I said that that was fine with Mark, he was willing to accept that again, so I said that was okay.
Okay.
And there was another one as well.
I don't have that one.
Well, the appointment to the Fayette County Foundation was for the position that Mark Bamer holds, that expired January 1st of 2014, and we took no action. Now, are you saying that action has been taken?
Action has been taken.
By the council?
She requested me if that was okay. When I called her on that, she said that it was all required.
Legally, I think the council should.
Okay, does anyone want to make a motion on that?
If Mark Bamer is willing to stay, I would move that we appoint Mark Bamer to another four-year term to the Fayette County Foundation Board.
Okay. Motion's been made.
Second.
Okay. It's been seconded, motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor of Mark being appointed another four years, vote with a aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion carries, Mark will fulfill that obligation as he has.
Thank you. Sorry to be a stickler about me.
No, that's fine. I'm obviously learning as I go here. Under new business, between the 911 annual report by Terry Bennett and the 2014 budget fund reduction, and we're going to insert the library in there to report to us as well. Terry?
All of you guys should have received a report in your box. I want to make this fast and sweet due to the weather. A few years ago, when Dale was appointed on the advisory board for the council member, he asked me to do this, and it really puts things in perspective. Currently, we have six full-time dispatchers, which I'm getting ready to lose one to Butler County, and currently have eight part-time dispatchers. To hit the primary things, we have nearly 8,500 people that are signed up on the Everbridge notification system. There's over 17,000 contact ways for them to be notified. Of course, we send those for weather-related emergencies, school closings, anything like that. We do use it on a daily basis to our county firemen. Every time they get a call, we do that. Also on the report, you'll see a monthly report for the 911 calls for 2013. There was a total of 9,568 911 emergency calls. The wireline, there was 1,728 wireless, 7,368, the VoIP 472, and the non-initiated self-hints 431. The things that you can notice, again, is the wireless is again growing and tripling, more than tripling, the wirelines. There were 23,294 incidents created for all of the emergency services. Connersville Police Department had 12,051, the Sheriff's Department 7,170, EMS 2,478, the Fire Department 959, the Glenwood Fire Department 163, Everton 322, and Bentonville Fire Department 151. And in your packet, you'll see how many of each type of call that they had all responded to. Those numbers do include residence checks that the city police creates themselves that doesn't really involve dispatch. The Sheriff's Department does ask us to create the residence checks for those, and that includes lockouts too, so that kind of bumps it up some. Another thing that we're still pushing on the public ed, I had attended a social media class put on by the Department of Homeland Security. We have, we're not on Twitter or anything like that, but we do have Facebook. It grows every day. Right now, we have 4,087 people that are on Facebook, and we update that on the weather, alerts to school closings, or we put kind of anything that's public information related on it. The surcharges are the same as they were in 2013, or I'm sorry, in 2012. Our January balance was 407,307.65. Our December 2013 balance was 451,274.74, which that means after operating expenses, we still increased our budget of $43,967.9. We operate in under budget, not having to ask for any additionals or anything last Again, one of our biggest issues is low salaries and losing people. Our seniority goes from myself, which now I have eight in. We have a girl that works 13 years, and one that works 10, and then it jumps down to one year and we spend it. So we're losing all. There's our annual report that was submitted to the state, wireless board is requested as well.
Does anybody have any questions for Terry? Terry, did you say you had yet another opening now?
I have a girl that was just, today, she was actually offered a position at Butler County, 14 cents dollars an hour, part-time, Butler County, Ohio. So she's going on a fourth floor than what she makes part-time. She has over 10 years of service in. So here we go again.
If there's nothing else, Terry, thank you for your report.
Thank you.
Before the library comes by, over, transferred by Barton, under reports, did you want to step, and pass right past, I want to pass you on the agenda.
Here's for me.
Yes, sir.
Here, we're going to extend some of the microphones because you can't hear a thing.
I gotta speak.
You know. Okay, report on what the commissioners have been, have done. Last month, we received an invoice from NDOT for $82,287 for a bill, and that was just a, a invoice we, Debbie has taken care of. A maximum, which apparently, we're going to get a reimbursement this year of $78,258 from them. Last meeting, we okayed what they're calling a downhill derby now, the same thing as the roller derby they had last year, the Lions Cup is going to have that again this year, and we okayed them using the hill down on Ziegler Road. Bridge 82, we approved a change order, the bank on that bridge, and so we're by, on Village Creek where it comes out to Alphanta Road, the bank was giving away, and we had to stabilize that. That was a $1,600 cost, but it would be an 80% reimbursement from the state, so we would have less to do with that. ADA contract, we approved a contract for a consultant to come in and inventory our buildings and our side loads and streets that the county owns, to make a report, to make sure we're ADA compliant, or to make a plan for what isn't compliant, to bring it into compliance. And we have to do that because this has been on the books, requirement to do it for several years, but now NDOT is saying that if we don't have, and other people are saying, if we don't have ADA compliant plan in place at any rate, that they're going to withhold grants from us, so it's imperative that we do that. Today at our meeting, we took bids and leased farm ground out up there on Waterloo Road. We got a, we got an email from, from the state on our Mallow Park dam. We've been paying, I guess, $4,000 to have that dam inspected, and this last time, they got, they got the hazard classification reduced down to where now the state will do the inspection, no cost to it, but they are requesting that the money we've been spending on dam inspections that we've spent on the dam to improve it and get rid of some of the problems. I think that's about, about all that's, all that has happened. At the last meeting, at the last council meeting, if you remember, we discussed the highway garage, and we've been at loggerheads, or haven't been able to come to an agreement, it seems like, the commissioners of the council, whether we should build, and what we should build, and we formed a committee, three of the council members and me to sit down and discuss what we should do. I'd like to just take us through where this garage building has been from the start. Commissioners approached the council in June of 2013 about the need to build a new highway garage and give an estimated cost of $550,000 to $600,000. Mr. Flum's firm had examined the building prior to this, his becoming a councilman. He said that his engineers stated at that time that the building should be condemned, that when they went down there, you could take a shovel and just put it underneath, underneath most posts. In June, the commissioners placed a legal ad for proposals for existing building for a highway garage. One proposal was received in July for an existing building in Industrial Park, and another individual had expressed interest in selling a building. I should say that prior to us doing that, the council had requested that we pursue purchasing existing buildings instead of spending money on a new structure. July the 16th, 2013, commissioners approved hiring Butler Furman and Super Performance and inspection on the existing garage and make recommendations. At the council meeting that night, Wolf told council that Miles Richmond is willing to come and give an estimate to repair the building. Mr. Skydale supported repairing the existing building. Mr. Knobby suggested we build a new shop and build, please, pieces at a time rather than spending the money all at once. Flum moved to authorize the commissioners to request bids to repair the existing building. At that time, I stated commissioners don't need the council's approval to give bids, they just need to know how much money the council is willing to spend. Mr. Wolf took it upon himself to contact Miles Richmond to give an estimation of repair of existing structures. Miles Richmond quoted replacing posts on the building and reusing the existing siding. The reports from Butler and Furman and Super, structural engineer and area planning, both stated that the building is in very poor condition, and it would not be economically feasible to repair the existing structure. Although they did not recommend vacating the building immediately, they stated that the building would be expected to deteriorate and become a liability for the county. We received a letter from our insurance company, our insurance agent, Brad Wilson, stating that the unsafe building condition posed a liability. The structural engineer from Butler Furman and Super came to council to explain the problems with the existing building. He stated that a heavy bench on the garage area on the west side is actually supporting one wall, as the building timbers are rotting and not supporting the building. The engineer stated that the existing building will not support every snow or wind load. At that time, I stated that we had found, since he examined the building, that the current building is built on a dump. We had an electrical problem, and when they were digging down to find what the problem was, they found the trash from that old dump had eaten the insulation off on the wiring, and since that, why some people remember that it was actually built on a dump. September 2013, county council conducted a public hearing to allow interested citizens who express their opinion on construction or purchase of a highway garage. At that same meeting, commissioners requested an additional appropriate $600,000 to the KIM-CAP fund for construction of a highway garage. Council voted against the $600,000 and approved $300,000. Commissioners received qualifications from two architectural engineering firms and selected Mays Design Richmond. Execution of the contract has been on hold pending soil borings results on this site to determine whether it was actually feasible to build on this site. Commissioners received results of the soil borings by Patriot Engineering. These results indicate that the additional costs associated with buildings on the existing site would amount to $50,000 to $100,000 extra. Soil borings were also performed on land owned by Woody Wells, which is directly in front of the land we own. The soil borings were satisfactory, however, when we had the last big rain, that land was a pond. So to use that site, we would have to build the land up to street grade to put a building In December, commissioners approved negotiating with Willie's purchase of land in front of the curb building garage to build an highway garage. We have done that. We can, but we can buy the piece of ground if we choose to do so, but again, we'll have to build that lot up to make it usable. In January, at your last council meeting, the commissioners of the council agreed to form a joint committee to come to a definitive conclusion on what to do. Myself, Mr. Winta, Mr. Flum, and Mr. Wolf met the following Tuesday. Mr. Flum stated that he didn't want to spend any money on a highway garage because the present building does not look nice. He wanted commissioners to get rid of the highway superintendent, do away with the highway union. The committee decided after that, if we got through with that, that commissioners should negotiate to buy Fuzzy Lake's building, which was one of the buildings we had been offered. The commissioners went individually to inspect Lake's building and discuss the purchase, and I understand that some of the council members did also. On January the 21st, the commissioners approved the hiring of two appraisers to complete independent appraisals for Lake's building at a cost not to exceed $2,000 each. In order to buy any building, we have to have two appraisers, and cannot spend more than the average of those two appraisers. After that, I received a call from another commissioner informing him that the councilman on the committee were going to revisit the property in Industrial Park, and told him not to tell me, for what reason I wouldn't know. Now, the building in Industrial Park, we had looked at better than six, well, last fall, when we were thinking, if that's one of the other, one of the other two buildings which we were offered. I and Mr. Flum and I don't know, and Mrs. Wise, I don't know who else went up there. It was deemed at that time that it would cost quite a bit of money to fix that building where we could use it, needs more doors on it, bigger doors on it, there's no finished office space in it. But at any rate, they were going to just not to tell me. Then I got a call from a councilman that the committee had met again without me. I thought I was part of the committee to decide what we were going to do, but evidently not. That they had met again, and the committee had met without me, and decided that they didn't want to purchase the existing building, they wanted to still build an office and a shop, and then possibly give money to build a pole building at a later date. In conclusion, this process has been counterproductive at the very least. Commissioners have been running around in circles at the whims of the council. Indiana code defined the responsibility of the council and the commissioners. It is the commissioners' responsibility morally and legally to conduct the county's business, including controlling, maintaining and supervising county property and facilities. Commissioners obligated to keep these facilities in a condition that is safe for employees to conduct the county's bids. There's another thing that I think we need to think about real strongly, is the employee's safety. If that building falls down, or a portion of it falls down, and you get somebody hurt down, you're really going to have a liability claim on your hands. To finish up, we need to all stop and think what we elected, that we were elected to take care of the county's best interests, and that requires that we leave personal agendas out of these decisions.
Thank you, Commissioner Parker, for the report. Does anybody have any questions, Parker?
I have one.
I'd like to comment, the meeting that's three, you, Mike, and Jim and I met, we came up with an agreement that we would spend money to build a new three-bay garage down there, and an office this year. Probably not the size that what they originally were intending, I don't know the actual width, but they were going to build it 70 feet deep because that was the length of the whole building. I mean, the 70 feet for the stories was based on two trucks, two trucks with the snow piles, you know, be back dinner back to back. What we agreed on was to build the shop and the office this year, appropriate the money to do that, and then next year, we would build a pole structure, but we're not going to put the poles in the ground, we don't want to. We would build, we would use like mortars.
Mr. Flum?
Yes.
I still have a hard time understanding why three people on the council could decide what we are going to do. As I said, there's, the council has a responsibility of appropriating money, the commissioners have the responsibility of building and maintaining buildings. The commissioners come to you and agree to have a committee to try and iron out their differences. They've used. Then you decided that the commissioners, even though that's their responsibility to build buildings and maintain buildings, that the commissioners shouldn't even be involved in your meeting. Now, where do you come up with telling us what we're going to build and when we're going to build?
Well, you can have, Mike is the one who called the meeting. We met, so what the reason was, I don't know.
Why did you, why did you have another meeting that you was going to go look at the industrial building and say, don't tell, don't tell the commissioners?
I didn't say that.
Somebody did.
I don't know.
Somebody did.
I don't know, but I was just called to come up and look at it. I said I-
You'd already looked at it, right?
Yes, I said I'd already seen it, but I'll go with you to look at it again.
Well, again, again, I don't understand why, how the council thinks that they can decide what we're going to build and where we're going to build.
Well, I think it's also the council's responsibility to watch out for the dollars that's being spent.
The dollars, yes, not exactly, not what we're going to, in other words, you don't need a commissioners coming to you.
Yes, well, we all got a job, but we're just saying-
But we don't, we don't work for the council, Mr. Flum.
Well, again, Mike called the meeting, we met, we talked about it, and he got back with you. And we can explain our thing to you in another meeting if you want to do that.
Commissioner Parker told you about the meeting we were going to have.
You did.
And we were going to have, just to talk about. And as I mentioned in our meeting, all we can do is make a recommendation. We have no authority to tell the commissioners what they can and cannot do. Our sole responsibility is to-
That's not what you just got through saying, Mr. Flum. You agreed, you said, we have decided that this is what we're going to do. You didn't say we're going to make a recommendation to the commissioners.
We came up with a plan and it was presented and we agreed and Mike presented it to you. We didn't say, we can't make that call, we said that.
Thank you.
We can't make that call.
Colonel Jim?
Where did the $300,000 go that we appropriated from last year for this project?
It went and spent. It went and spent, not one penny of it was spent.
We didn't spend none of it?
No, we spent nothing.
So we didn't encumber, right?
What?
We didn't encumber none of it?
No, nothing was spent, we had nothing to encumber. We didn't, there was no contract entered into or anything like that. So based on that, we can't encumber that money.
So the commissioner never had a contract to start with the $300,000 that we appropriated from last year?
No.
So they have zero?
Because they were-
So they have zero, right?
Nothing was spent. So right now, in order to do anything, you would have to reappropriate money in 2014.
What I'd like to recall from our meeting is that when I asked both you and councilman Flum, or Wolf, about the additional building that you had suggested to be built at a later date or later phase, I asked you about appropriating those funds and you said we could either appropriate, the commissioners could come back and appropriate those funds this year or next year. And you just stated that they could be done last year, which is not my understanding of our meeting that we had. So if that were the case, then why would it not be prudent to appropriate all the funds at one time and let the commissioners do with it as they say fit? If they're going to do two buildings, they do two buildings. I mean, it's a recommendation that we presented, they don't have to take that recommendation.
Right. Well, this would be, Chris, you might have the answer to this. When we, when we did the pool a while back, they elected to do the pool and then not to do the bathhouse at the same time, but they had to wait one year between those two contracts because otherwise they were considered one contract and you couldn't do that. So they had to wait a full year to split the two jobs up. I wanted to do, I thought the best thing to do was to do the one building and a pre-engineered building, the garage, because that's, and you're limited to the number of contractors in the county can do a pre-engineered building constructed. But the pole structure for the storage, we had numerous contractors locally that could bid on that. So if we don't-
Well, that doesn't mean that you can't do them both at the same time. That still doesn't mean that you can't do them both at the same time.
That's, that would be my question.
And one contractor could, might, might give you a better bid to build both of them.
That's true.
You know, so again, to Mike's question, why, why not appropriate whatever money you're going to appropriate and let the commissioners do with it the best that they can? Instead of waiting six months or 12 months and coming back and begging again for more money? What, I don't understand the reasoning.
I wouldn't have, if you think we can do that, split them up into like two, because I'd like to get some, as many local bidders to bid on that building.
The commissioners, the commissioners try to get local bidders every time we do something.
Okay, but if you say we can do that, then I won't have a problem appropriating all the money right now for it.
Martin, what are we going to do, are we going to build down there, what are we going to do? What do you want to do?
Well, again, you have to figure, you have to figure in the money. The site where the county owns now, the engineer says it's going to cost a minimum, with the building we was going to build, it would cost a minimum $50,000 additional to build up there. The ground down in front, which Mr. Wells owns, and he is willing to sell.
What price?
Twenty thousand, twenty seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars.
How much would it take to build it up?
That's what I don't know yet, because we've been fussing around and you tell me to go, to go make Fuzzy an offer, try and buy that building. So if I'm in that project, why would it be down here looking at what's going to cost to build up that lot?
Well, I want-
We got to get to one place where we, where we got some idea of what we're doing. Instead of the council changing their mind every five minutes-
Let's get there right now. I'm willing to build down where we're at, we have the willingness to build it up, do it. I can't see you have two different locations, have one over Fuzzy's, and we have sent something down?
Again, Jim, what the commissioners is asking the council to do is appropriate however much money they think we can afford to spend on a highway garage and the county commissioners will do the best they can to get the most building at the best price.
My opinion, if we buy a building some other place, it's going to be costly running back and forth if you keep the gravel down there at the highway department.
There is, there is ground over there where that is, you have storage over there as well. But again, can we get to where the council does their job and the commissioners does theirs? If we can get down to that, then we can get someplace.
Not you often look after the taxpayers' money.
Okay, let's start doing that instead of pushing our hidden agendas.
I haven't got no hidden agenda.
Do I? Well, then why the bickering around for every, we started this project last June and every time we come in here, you want us to do something different. You want us, you want us to buy a building instead of building the building. We found two buildings, then we said we want to repair the buildings. Had to prove to you can't, you can't repair the building because it's not, it's a-
I understand that, I, you know, I went through that, I understand that.
Okay. Then you wanted, then you wanted to build a building, then you want me to go over and try and buy Fuzzy's building? And before I even got back to report to you, then I get a call that you decided to do something else.
I don't want to see, I don't want to see the highway department trucks going up and down the residential neighborhood. I was born over these cars over on Fine Street and-
And that's exactly where our trucks go every day when they, when they go out that direction.
Yeah, but they don't go up the street 40 or 50 times a day. You gotta think about the residential area over there.
Well, and we are thinking about it. Like I say, the committee, the people on the council that was on the committee is the ones that wanted us to go over there and negotiate with Fuzzy to buy that building. That was your idea.
I told you go and talk to him about it, I don't mean that I want-
You told me to go over and make him an offer.
We said that meeting was to go over to talk to Fuzzy. I re-stated numerous times to go talk to Fuzzy and I said if he, this figure is thrown out there and he accepts it, he accepts us at zero financing, are you guys in favor? You both said yes to it. And that's what was said. And I have to agree with Barton.
We did. I can agree with that. I never did hear the report back if he did or did not accept it.
Why, why give you a report when you've already changed your mind about what you want to do before I give it to you? You had a meeting and said now what you want to do is build down here, right?
Yeah, that's final, that's our last meeting, that's what we decided.
Yeah, so-
Can we restate our agreement? There were, there were numerous items, so I'd just like to bring out the important ones. Number one is the idea that the existing building is unsound. Our insurance agents have advised us that, our attorneys have advised us that. You know, if we were in private business, we would be getting out of Dodge. There's no way that you could stay in that building without incurring huge potential liability. And I think we all agreed with that back in June, July, when we had the straw boat. We didn't want to spend all the money at one time, I think that was part of it. We didn't want to finance it. We talked about whether we did or didn't have the funds in the CUMCAT.
Which you really do.
We have those funds last year, we didn't spend them, and this year we'll have more funds in the CUMCAT. So for all practical purposes, we could have spent 300 last year and 300 this year out of that CUMCAT fund or wherever you determine that the best place is. And if the decision that the commissioners make that's the best to make those two buildings, I think we all would like to see it built down in this existing location. As a matter of fact, that was a condition of the $300,000 to begin with.
Right, but the conditions keep changing every meeting. But come in here, that's, that's my problem. I don't have, I don't have a problem with trying, trying to get along and-
So at one time-
Kind of going along with what the council wants, but I can't do that if you change your mind every month.
You wrote a form-
Just to run us around in circles.
To counsel to-
I'm tired of running around in circles, I'm done.
Do we need a vote?
To what? What we need a vote is as far as how much money you're willing for the commissioners to spend. And we'll take care of the building and do the best job we can.
We really can't say where it is going to be built. I think they have to have the funds available, realistic dollar amount that they can work with, that they can look at the existing location to see if it's feasible. Councilman Flum considered one location that I don't know if it's been in consideration, but no borings have been done in that particular area. If it were working out, it may or may not work. It may not even be feasible to build the ground up, it may be too cost prohibitive to do that. But they have to have a realistic dollar amount in order to work with to do something. And they don't have a realistic dollar amount.
Now, I will say, if you're talking about Fuzzy's building against a building down there, the $600,000 building that Mr. Wina helped design for what was going down there, half of it enclosed for shop and office space, and the other half open on one side and gravel floor. You've got more building over there that's all, that's all enclosed, all on cement floor. You have more office space, in fact, you have enough office space that you can move some other county office over there with that and free up space in the courthouse at the annex or whatever. But you can't build, you can't build for what you can buy that building over there for, you can't build a new building. But which is, which is the right way to go? I would have to, you know, look at both sides. You're going to spend more money, a building, the same thing down here.
Well, and there was consideration-
One thing about that building over there, whether that's what we want to do or not, Jay can get all his trucks in there with the snow piles on it, shut the door, it'd keep warm and you don't have stuff freezing up and having to worry about getting started the next morning to get out on the snow route.
But he would do that in the proposed building at the new location, is that correct? Or out of the existing? He could also do that at the proposed, with the proposed building?
The proposed building you're talking about, or that we originally talked about?
Originally talked about?
We had an old, you couldn't, you know, you couldn't because it was an open front building. So, you know, what that gains you is you get it in out of the rain and the snow, but it does, but it's not, it's not-
heated.
It's not heated.
Enclosed.
So it's still going to be cold and you're still going to have the freezing up problems unless you, you can't put heaters in them all and plug them in all night long and keep the engines warm.
There was consideration also about keeping the existing building on the tax rules, whereas they would come off if it was purchased by the county? Is that, that was another one of the factors being discussed?
Well, that, you know, that is consideration, but if somebody needs a building like that, they're going to build a building like that or find it, I mean, it's, it's a wash, whatever, whatever you do, you know, as far as taxes are concerned.
Parker, it sounds like you're leaning towards the Fuzzy building, so what would you do with the bill, the stuff down here?
The building was down there?
No, the bill, I'm talking about, what would you do with your gravel? What are you going to do with your salt? Are you leaving it down there or are you bringing it over here?
We can store some up down there.
So you're going to have two locations?
Well, if we, if we bought that over there-
It sounds like you're leaning towards the Fuzzy building or you like that building.
Well, I do like it and, and like I say, that's what the council told me to do, is go and try and buy it. So I thought, they thought that was the best thing to do. You know?
So then we're going to have equipment stored in two different places?
No.
You're going to have to have something down there to load your gravel, your salt and stuff like that?
You can take a loader down there to load that, but all of your other equipment would be, would be over there. And in response to Mr. Flum's statement at the last meeting about he didn't like, what in our committee meeting he stated before about you didn't like the appearance of our highway garage down here? And I can, and I can understand it, but the reason is, the building sits back and all our equipment is in front. If we build on the back part of the highway garage down that we have now on that site, you're going to have the same thing. Now, you mentioned Wayne County. Wayne County does look nice, but the reason it does, the building sits out in front, and if you ever went up there to Wayne County building, they've got a bunch of junk stuff sitting in the back that looks just as bad as ours, except you can't see it from the roof.
Yeah, well, that makes a difference.
So what we need to know is how much we're willing to spend for a building. We're willing to listen to whatever you have to say or your suggestions. We just don't, don't like the demands and then the demands change every, every time we see you.
Commissioner Parker, do you have a dollar amount that you're requesting?
Thank you, Parker.
Do you have a dollar amount that you're requesting from the council? That you can do a study on both locations and see what's the best value for the dollar?
Well, he's gone with it. As I've said before, he's gone cost in the neighborhood of $600,000 to build, to build the building that you helped design. Add to that cost, if you put it on Mr. Wells, the cost, which I don't know what that is, the cost of building a lot up at 27, 10,000, 27,750 I think it is for the ground, that's what you're going to have in there. Metro Lakes's building is going to be $575,000. It's, it's less money, it's a little bit less money. You're getting four acres of ground with that that you don't have. You're getting more square footage, you're getting a better building than what we proposed building, and you're getting extra, extra office space which you can utilize for something So you're talking about from 575 to 600? No, I don't, I don't really, Jay has any idea what it would cost to build that lot up or not?
I have no idea what it costs to build one up. First you have to go and buy dirt, build it up.
Right. But to use, to use that lot, you'd have to build it up. You can't build a building down there and then have a rain coming in like we have and have inside the building flooded. But the site, but the site we're on now is just not, is not feasible to build on without a lot of extra money. It was a poor site to start with. And why, why, why they built on dump when they saw, when they did, when they built the original building, I have no idea, but they did. Maybe that's the best place on there, I don't know.
I just, I want to just give you my opinion, I am not for us to have two highway department locations.
Okay.
I mean, that's personally, my personal opinion.
So you'd be satisfied if we was over there and sold that site where we are? Right?
Do what now?
Oh, I thought you were shaking your head, yes, I-
I, I couldn't even hear you.
So you would be satisfied if we bought that building over there and with that piece of ground and sold the piece of ground we have now?
I'm not going to tell you what to, what to buy, it's just that I'm not for two locations.
That's what you said, but, but then you wouldn't have any, but you don't have any objection word as long as this one site, you're saying. Right?
I don't care, I don't, I really don't care, but I'd like to see us go on our own property first.
Our own property?
I really would, I'd like to see- Your own property is not- You guys have the drawings of the highway department of that place down there. I mean, you can change your buildings around, you can build on the front end where the fence is and build it to whatever, however you want to build it. I'm not telling you where to buy whatever ground you want to buy, but I'm just not for two locations.
I understand, I understand.
We can only build where the soil is acceptable, and if soil wasn't acceptable where the current location is and where the soil borings were done was up basically against the back of the property line, which the council and Flums, and a lot of objections- the property line, which to Councilman Plum's, there are a lot of objections.
You have the soil sample with you?
No, I don't. No, I don't.
Barton, did you do the borings at the bottom ground also? The soil borings?
On Mr. Wells' property?
Yes.
Yes, we did.
And they were acceptable?
Those soil borings come out fine, you hit bedrock at 15 feet. The only problem we have is it is lower than the road and that last, it don't happen often, but that last big rain we had, we had a pond out there. So that's, if you utilize it, you're going to have to build a lot up.
You could be spending 50 to 100,000 to build it up. You could be spending 50 to 100,000 to acquire the land and to build it up.
Yeah, you're probably two or three feet lower, aren't you, than the road down there?
It looks, I'd say it's two feet. Yeah, and a truckload of dirt don't go very far, Bill, with that stuff up. And you're going to have to build it up under the building plus out from the, from the road clear in, I would think, past your building, because you've got to drive into the building.
And the soil borings up above were only taken behind the pug mill, weren't they?
Right.
Okay, behind the pug mill is where they were taken.
Right.
But you're talking about down there, if you have to build that ground up, Parker, $50,000 or $25,000?
I don't know, I have no idea, Russ, what it is.
But over there, when you go over to Fuzzy Lake, you're going to have to put a fence around that dude.
Mm-hmm.
You're going to have to have a salt bin.
Mm-hmm.
So, so is that kind of offsetting the cost?
It will offset, what, how it bounces out, I don't know, because we don't have the cost on it.
We talked about it.
We haven't had a chance to sit down and study one way or the other, because I've been getting instructions every time, every time we meet or every time the council meets on doing something different. So we don't know what to study.
Commissioner Barker, we talked about potentially if they're going to demolish that building to reuse the steel to build a new salt bin and so forth. So there's, so some of that cost could be defrayed by the fact that we can reuse some of the material from the existing building that gets demolished. I just want to remind the council that we have almost a million dollars in Q cap fund, and that fund can only be used for building maintenance and so forth. We can't use it for raises, we can't use it to pay county employees.
We are. We are paying one IT director this past year.
So we just want to make sure that, understand that. It gives replenished, we replenished almost at rate of 150,000 a year. So we need to take that into consideration. Commissioner Jackson, you were standing, did you have something to add?
I was just supporting Commissioner Parker, because all three of the commissioners were at the same position. We've got a job to do, the need is immediate, we need a decision, we're going to have the money to do the job and do it right. The number one consideration is the safety of employees. Building's not fit to be in, is that simple?
Thank you.
Mr. President, did the committee come up with a recommendation about the dollars?
The recommendation that was made was to allow them to build or to acquire, to appropriate 300,000 for the building that Councilman Plum described, and then later, in the same year or the next year, come back and appropriate possibly an additional 150,000 for another structure for the equipment. As I stated earlier, it would just make more sense to appropriate all the funds at one time, so that they have a dollar, a reasonable, a realistic dollar amount that they can work with to, I think, study both locations. And Commissioner Barker was, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, would you, I think you're requesting 600,000?
Right.
Commissioners, any of you, doesn't make any, Barton's spending an awful lot of time on his feet there. Commissioner Jackson? I supported the commissioner's original plan to build a new garage down to the current location from the beginning. I know that the plan has had some complications that I think can be overcome. I still prefer that location down there, although I'm not trying to dictate to the commissioners. But I, since the water is pretty muddy right now, and I hate to muddy it up anymore, but I'd like to offer you guys some information, just for your consideration, and also for consideration of the council. In respect to the building on the east side that's owned by Mr. Lake, aside from the fact that it is near a residential location, there's a railroad crossing that's closed quite frequently right in front of it, and among other considerations. I did go to the trouble to check on the status of the tax abatement that Mr. Lake has had on that building for 10 years, and his abatement has just recently expired, and the taxes on that, property taxes on that property right now amount to $11,851.80 a year. Now, if we locate over there, if we acquired his building, that would take a tax-paying piece of property off the tax rolls and further reduce our assessed valuation. Now, I would expect that if we occupied the east side location, we would be there for a long time, probably at least 30 years. Now, if the tax rates stay the same as they are now for X number of years, at his current taxes, over a 10-year period would equal over 19% of the cost of the project on 121. Over a period of 20 years, the loss of that tax revenue off that property would equal 39.5% of the cost of the project on 121. Over a period of 30 years, the lost revenue, the lost tax revenue on that piece of property alone would be 59.2% of the cost of the project on 121. Now, from the standpoint of dollars and cents, it just makes dollars and cents to me to keep our facility on 121. And if the commissioners have to spend a few extra dollars down there to make it suitable, then so be it. I'm not going to stand in their way to do that. But I wanted to offer that information as food for thought in your decision-making process. And it's not intended to be an attack toward the commissioners or the council's committee that has looked at this. But I think it's something that's certainly worth consideration.
I, I think you're a good steward of the people's money, Mr. Plum, and I appreciate that. My personal opinion is that from what Mr. Parker said, one wall, the existing building is being held up by a maintenance bench down there. Our need is immediate. This could have been resolved months ago without all the monkey shines.
I agree.
I, I, my first responsibility is the safety of some of these men and ladies that work and live down there eight hours a day. Number two, we've got an existing facility that fits our needs. It's like a hand in a glove. I did talk to, or Mr. Bob Young called me about the train blocking the intersection over there. I talked to Janie Oakley. She and I grew up in church together and were married into the same family. And we talked, and she had, she had an arrangement with the CSX to change their schedule according to her bus routes. There is a provision in Indiana law that if you block an intersection more than 20 minutes, that the conductor can be cited. That's never been done here, to my knowledge, unless it was done a long time before I became a police officer. And you're talking about a federal entity, so they're going to laugh at your citation. It's a, it is a consideration. It's also a consideration that I addressed with Fuzzy when I first talked to him about the traffic and breaking down the street over there. And Fuzzy said that I have at least one truck a day on average with heavy steel come down that street. And I've been on finance several times, I don't personally notice it to be any worse than anything else. It does take, it does take, as you said, a building off the tax rolls. But if someone gets hurt, or the building collapses on a $150,000 truck, that kind of offsets what you're saying. The commissioners have no, have no desire to spend another penny other than what's necessary. But we have a fund with a million dollars in it, that is a dedicated fund, that can't be used for anything except capital improvement, it can't be used for insurance, it can't be used for salaries. That's, it was there for situations like this. And I understand what you're saying, and you have a very valid point, but I think it's offset by the safety of the employees and the need that is immediate. And I don't take it as you were trying to tell us what to do at all, I just, I'm trying to stress in very strong terms my opinion. So, does that, does that answer your questions, how I, how I think about it?
I think I'm clear on what your feelings are.
And as I said, you're a good steward, you're a smart man, and I appreciate that.
I wouldn't say that, but thank you anyhow. But that's, that's one thing that I'm looking at as a council member. But I think that from here, the only legal course that the commissioners have to take is to come to the council again with a request for an additional appropriation, like we did last year, and see what, see how much money the council will give you this time.
Can we do that tonight?
Has not been advertised.
No, we have to advertise. It actually requires a public hearing, a legal public hearing for an additional appropriation.
You could have a special meeting for that?
Yes.
Yes.
You have to have it advertised 10 days prior to when they hear it for additional. But you could have a special meeting with the purpose of hearing that additional.
Can we do that? Can we do that in two weeks?
You've got a calendar to meet.
I agree, Frank, this has gone on too long.
Yes, sir.
It should never have taken this long to make this decision.
Mr. President, could I make a motion that we have a special meeting allowing the appropriate time to advertise for the purpose of approving an appropriation? That would be agreeable to the committee?
There's a motion on the floor to have all the special meetings?
You could do it on the 18th.
On the 18th of February? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded that we have a special meeting on the February, on February 18th to appropriate additional funds for the commissioners for the building of a highway garage. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, motion is carried. Thank you, Commissioner.
Ladies, thank you.
Now, the library, who do we have for the library?
Mrs. Yanis.
Mrs. Yanis. Mrs. Scott. Melissa, I apologize, but I believe I passed the commissioners.
I perfectly understand. I'll try not to take a lot of your time, because I know the weather's getting really bad out there. I appreciate the time you're taking to let us come and brag about our library. I am forced to be the assistant director at the library, so I am extremely proud of it. I wanted to hit a few of the highlights that we had in 2013. One of them is with the bicentennial. We were considered a bicentennial partner because on March 4th, we had the happy birthday celebration with over 250 people in the library. I have been there over 16 years, and I have never seen that many people in the library at one time. We also hosted programs with the bicentennial, the hometown highlights was shown in there. We did a tent down on July 3rd from 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. with the library staff being down there all day. We still had the library open and had staff down there, so it was a lot of fun. One of the things I like to brag about is we did win the big, the best historical float for Babe the Blue Ox that was pulling the John Connor Trading Post. And if you want to see a lot of, a bunch of libraries and get excited, that actually really made our day. We had a dedication of the Indiana Room. If everybody knows Paulette Hayes or remembers her, we renamed the Indiana Room to Paulette Hayes Indiana Room. And that was a few of the things that we did in 2013, but we did a lot more than that. In 2014, we planned to replace the skylights in the library. We have received bids, I have not seen the details on it, that will be presented at our next board meeting. And we will be partnering with the Link to do a Read to Rise program. We're also going to be partnering with the Link for bookmobile outreach and any other things we can think of that will help our children. The council has a three-page document. The first page is our annual circulation for 2013, how many items we checked out. We had over 111,643 books checked out in the library. Non-print materials, we had 88,715. And total materials in our library was over 207,000. We have over 21,000 cardholders at the library, which I think is pretty good, when I believe the last count was 24,000 people at the county, so. Now, the page I'd like to point out that I think is the most, one of the most important is the final page. Last year, the library received $871,000 in taxpayers' money to support it. But there's a tool that we use that's called the Value of Our Library Calculator, and it takes all the materials that we loan out to people in our community and uses the market value price of that item. This year, our market value was $3,986,648. So for $870,000, $871,000, we've done oh, close to $4 million worth of business. And that doesn't even take in consideration everything we do. That doesn't take in consideration our programs that we provide, it doesn't, the meeting room that we let people in the community use. That's just the items that we circulate to our community. If you have any questions, I will be glad to attempt to answer them.
Thank you. Is there any questions from the council?
I'd like to point out a couple of things. Since I've been on the council and on the library board, I've invited the library to make a annual report such as this, so that we, as well as the general public, do know what goes on up there. And aside from what this year's report shows, I'd like to bring it to your attention that our library, unlike some in the state, is solvent. We came, we came in, I think, if I remember right, somewhere in the neighborhood of about $135,000 under... under budget for 2013, allowing us to put some $80,000 back in our rainy day fund, which is going to help go a long way in doing some work on the roof and our skylights for 2014, or a couple of projects that we're going to have to take on to maintain our facility. So, this group of people are being good stewards of the taxpayers' money. And as Melissa pointed out, the retail value of the services that we provided in 2013, almost $4 million worth of retail value of the services that we offer for about $841,000. So, our library is a bargain, and it's a terrific asset to the community. And if you haven't given him one yet, Melissa, there's James Sprague, there, our newspaper reporter. Make sure James gets a copy of your report, and hopefully, maybe on the slow news day, he might find something to do with it. I have nothing further.
Michelle, thank you. None of my family enjoys the library, they make use of it, and they always have very positive things to say about how my kids have taken part in some of the programs, and so forth, and enjoy it. You guys do a wonderful job.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming in on this lousy night.
Be careful.
Okay, the next item under new business is our 2014 budget fund reduction required commissioners approval, our capital improvement plan. What we need to do is have somebody present what we've uncovered in the budget hearings and budget committee meetings. Councilman Strong, would you be willing to meet with the commissioners in their next commissioners meeting to discuss the capital improvement fund and the funds that we're requesting?
Yes, if they'll have me.
You're always welcome.
Okay.
Okay. Let's take care of...Community Corrections Part-Time Wage Rate, Michelle Dudley. You awake?
I wanted to get a 144 approved for part-time wages up to $11 an hour. And in the packet that I gave you, the first thing you'll see is where my advisory board approved $11 an hour at the meeting on January 20th. And the next page is the IC Code, which states that my advisory board is the one that sets salary schedule and wages for my department. I'm having the same problem that some other departments are having. I think I've lost seven part-time employees since August. Scheduling has become a full-time job for me, just to try to get it covered. I have to run the facility officers, which is a residential part of a part-time hell. I can't keep them. I met with the subcommittee, and within a week of me meeting with them to talk about this, I had dropped two more employees. I have constant openings, I just can't keep help. The rate's not high enough, and the third sheet that you'll see there, before the Affordable Care Act came in, they were working 32 hours a week. Now they have to work 28, which I've been scheduling 24 one week, 32 the next, which comes out to 28 hours. That basically made everybody lose close to $150 a month in wages. Bringing them up to $11 an hour puts them...where the two full...or three full-time people back there make like $10.93. You know, seven, they're gonna be making seven cents more. My full-time people don't care, they've got insurance, vacation, holidays, sick days, I think seven cents an hour more than...I need to bring them up to 11, and maybe I can keep some help. And my advisory board did approve it. I've attached my financial report, it's the next page in there, I have the money. My budget is approved by the state, not by the county, because I'm spending state money and project income money. And it was covered for my 2013-14. I had enough money in there to cover it. I've already had to submit my 2014-15 grant, because our financial year, the fiscal year runs July 1 to June 30. And I put it in at $11.50 an hour, which would more than cover it, because I have to go through 2015. So, the money's not an issue, it's there. I just hope that you guys will approve the 144. You still have control over that. The other funds in your packet are the site assessment, which we just had done in July. We got an 89.2 on that. Last year, there were only two in the 90s in the entire state, so we did really well on that. That determines our future eligibility for grant funds. And the ones that have the black annual report, the rest of you, I have given one to, either at a subcommittee meeting or an advisory board meeting, or by email. And I put my card in there, if you guys would like the financial report sent to you each month, I send it out to commissioners, the council, that I have emailed my advisory board. If you just...my email's on my card, shoot me an email, let me know you want it, I'll send it to you every month when we get it done. But I would ask that tonight you approve my 144 for $11 an hour for my part-time people.
Thank you. Any questions from the council?
To show you, so you're granting offsets of the raises that you're talking about to these people?
Yes, it does, it was included even last year. And you'll see my financial statement, the balance is, the money's there.
And in essence, this would bring back...
What we took away.
Employees, what we took away, the $160 a month that we took away because of the Affordable Care Act restrictions.
I met with Michelle, and she explained it, I have no problem with what she wants to make to keep employees, which is obviously a problem.
I'll make a motion to accept the $11 an hour.
Is there a moment, do you second? Jimmy, do you second?
My three of us.
Okay, that's what I thought. Okay, it's moved and seconded that we approve the additional for Michelle.
144 for part-time employees.
144 for part-time employees, thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, motion carried. You name it.
Thank you very much. Michelle, I'd like to thank you for making it so easy to see the cause and effect.
Thanks. Well, I did that, but we cannot act on that, because commissioners might put it in the capital plan. So, we'll have to table it.
We'll have to table the, under additional appropriations, Edicor House Operating Fund, part-time maintenance, we'll table that till next week. We need a motion.
I know that you need a motion to table it, but you could just be saying...
I'll move to table it.
And I'll second the motion to table it.
It's been moved and seconded that we table the Edicor House Operating Fund till our next meeting for the part-time maintenance. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, motion is carried.
I will just say very quickly that this was to pay the part-time courthouse custodial staff, and the commissioners agreed at their meeting this morning that they do have $6,000 in the commissioners' budget in part-time, which we kind of keep there in case we have to hire cooks, if we had somebody out, or for any other needs we might have in the courthouse. So, we are going to pay treaty and care and fund out from that fund, because they were down to $500 in their fund. Remember, we left $3,000 in there, is all we left to pay them. Then we were going to ship that to Edic, which can't be done unless the commissioners agree to either alter the current capital plan, or they include it in the new capital plan. So, when Dale meets with them, then we can proceed, we'll pay them for a month out of those funds, and the commissioners' budget shifted back over then, shipped it over to Edic funds, if that's approved.
Okay. Thank you. The next business in order would be the salary 144s, road officer for Sheriff Paul
I'm over here to get a 144 approved for a road officer. With Brad Roster leaving us and headed over to the city, and with Mark Steel retiring off, that leaves us two down automatically, plus the one we lost when we did the cuts. So, there's no way we can function very easily with three out of the loop. So, the mayor board met, made a recommendation of hiring Clint Brown as the new road officer. I accepted that. He's met all our criteria, he's on our last one on our list to be hired. Before him, there were two others, that was Brad Roster and Chad Blais. Obviously, Roster's gone, went up the street about a block for about $15,000 more a year. So, I'm here to get that approved. He will be coming in at $500 less than what Roster was making because of Roster's seniority and time on. So, the other spot that I have open, Mark's spot, at this point, I'm not going to ask to have that filled. We're going to cover those spots with overtime. I would like to fill it, but obviously, at the end of the year this year, I don't have a spot to come back to, and I'm sort of out in the cold, and I don't think anybody's going to take care of me but me. So, I'm going to leave that spot open for now, so depending on what happens in the election, that could vary on when we fill that. But to fill that, we have to run another whole process, testing, physical, interviews, interviews with the mayor board, and then recommendation to make another list. So, I'm here to get the one. Unless you guys tell me you would fund that other spot that you cut a year and a half or so ago when Michelle left, you tell me you'll fund that in 2015, I'll run the process, and we'll get another one hired and try to get our manpower back up. You heard the 911 report, 12,000 incidents for the city, 7,000 for us. If you break that down among our officers, from me to the bottom, that's 700 calls apiece. That's 200 more than the city officers take each.
You're gonna ask me?
So, for that kind of money, I don't know what to say. But Michelle, good job on getting that up for your part-timers. I probably got someone that's coming over to see you. So, because ours is 962 an hour, so we can't even get them either, so I know exactly what she's dealing with. So, I don't know, at this point, I don't want to get on a soapbox about raises and pay, but it's ridiculous, and it's going to continue to be ridiculous. We're going to continue to train these guys, and they're going to go right up the street. It is the best financial move the city makes, I think, out of the whole entire year they make, is when they take one of our guys. Okay? I've been the sheriff for seven years, I have trained almost every police officer we have, and been involved in their hiring, not to mention some city ones. I know police officers, I know how to train them, I know...I'd like to say I know they're going to make mistakes, but obviously, five years, 10 years experience, 12 years experience, 30 years experience, mistakes are going to be made. So, I'm here to get the 144.
Okay, Billy, is there any...you say Michelle, but there's...that's grant money. Is there any grant money out there for these guys' salaries?
Not...
Through the sheriff's?
There was cops' FAS program to put some more policemen out, but there's nothing to supplement the salaries.
Look, now, the city gets what, rent-a-cop, or whatever they call them?
I don't think they do that anymore.
They don't do that anymore.
That's gone.
That ended.
But there is no grant money for salaries for the sheriff's department?
If there was, we'd all...
What you're talking about, can you use any Michelle's grant money?
No, I don't know.
No, my money has to stay completely, it's dedicated to community corrections.
But it's a continuing...I mean, day gone is, this is continuous cycle, and we talk about that seniority and what our road experience is. My average age in my department is 39 years old. That's pretty young, considering I'm 48, and Leonard Baker's 45, Bobby's the next oldest and just turned 40 or 41. This turnover rate, and now I'm down another spot, so we're going to have overtime, I am not putting a road officer out anymore by himself to work a 10-hour shift by himself. I'm not doing it. It's too dangerous. The city has at least three guys working all the time, inside the city with streetlights and sidewalks. We don't have that. I'm not putting them out by themselves anymore, it's not fair.
How many actually road deputies do you have, road deputies? Part of your guys are detectives or whatever?
Six. Well, if you count...we have 10 total, if you count me, the chief deputy, and the detective, we have 10. We had 11 with that extra guy, but we try to do without deposition for as long as we can, picking up the slack on Michelle's spot, and we're dividing up those, you know, most of those duties. We pull completely almost out of the task force, as far as that side goes, trying to pick that up, trying to do our part to help with county general. Okay? We can't hardly do anymore, and now we keep losing these guys. I mean, I cannot blame them, I can't pin him down to a contract to stay here for three years when he's got babies to feed. Brad Roster has babies. They can walk right up there and climb in that daygone car and get $15,000 raise and backup all the time. My guy is out here in this SUV, driving around in this snow, we just heard county highway, we're under level orange, hey, we're not coming out yet, we're going to wait until this gets down. Well, I don't get that option. We're out, we have to be out, by himself. So, that puts us calling me out, calling him out, and I don't care, that's sort of part of my job, I don't mind coming out at all. But to have these guys out here on the...by themselves, it is not happening anymore, I'm not having it on my conscience. We've stood here now for an hour and a half and listened to about employee safety. That's number one, what I've heard, right out of these three men right here. I have the same problem. Now, if the county highway guys park their truck, that building could fall on them, I doubt there's one of them could get shot tonight, going to a domestic, about sure of it. So, I'm not letting these guys work by themselves anymore. Enough's enough. We have the extra spot there, we're going to use those funds to transfer to cover overtime, unless you tell me I can fill it, which I would love to, so we could get two guys back from the academy, because 16 weeks training is how long they're gone for. Okay? So, you tell me we'll fill that up, my open spot there that was sort of promised to me by the last council, but I won't go into that yet. You tell me we'd fund that in 2015, I fill them both and get them, both of these guys gone.
What's it cost to send a deputy there to school?
The state pays for that, it's covered.
Oh, the state pays for it?
We pay the salary and meals. We have to buy meals now, it's not, we don't furnish meals.
How long is that training?
How long?
Yeah, how long is that training?
16 weeks. And you know, and while I'm on the soapbox, just let me get this out. Everybody talks about county employees, we're all the same, we're county employees. Every position that gets filled around throughout the county, I do not believe, with the exception of a few elected officials, there is a one that has to go for 16 weeks of training. I don't believe there's a one. So, when we're passing out those raises, and we're giving out equal...there's not a one that does exactly what these guys do. Nobody. And I'll argue with any county employee here, I don't care. But we can't continue, gentlemen and ladies, this turnover rate, them snatching our guys, two-year veteran Brad Roster, who is really good, I mean, he is really good, and he walked right up there and they got him. And they took Ryan Sherwood, and I mean, they're crazy not to. I can't even be mad at Dave for that, doing that's a smart move. If I could lure him back, I'd love to snatch one back. But I think I have the people I have, they have me, because I could afford to stay at the county. My wife's LP'd in for 20 years before I was...while I was doing this. I could afford to stay here. If it wasn't for that, I'd probably be wearing blue. And I hate that, because we have a good department. But we can no longer sit back and risk, they can't risk it, and I'm not doing it. We have maintained the lowest overtime budget in the history of that department. I know, because I've been there. Enough is enough, I can't ask them to risk it anymore. We were down short a man when Michelle left, left that spot open, and then we lost Roster, and then we got, now Mark's gone. I can't do it, we cannot do it, and continue to do it. We cannot do it and continue to do it. The next sheriff, I mean, he's gonna get, I guess, I don't wanna say he or she, but they're gonna get me back on the rolls, which day gone. You're getting a guy with 20 years' experience. That's not like bringing out a rookie. Okay? Huge difference. So he's gonna be sort of lucky, but yet, he's still gonna have the same problem, because no matter what, I still got Chad Blais, I can't name him, but I still got Chad Blais. I can't say Clint doesn't go to steal, the city doesn't steal him. I, I can't say that. Those guys would sort of, I don't wanna say they'd be fooled not to go, but for $15,000 and backup all the time, they're gonna find out really quick what it's like to be a road deputy, when they're out here by themselves. I done it, she done it, he's done it. Bill Hutton, the president of the mayor board, has been a state trooper, he's done it. They know what it's like. Obviously, his salary is a lot better than what the guys make here. So I'm not gonna get, I'm not, well, I shouldn't say I'm not gonna get on my soapbox, because I already am. But there has to be, has to be some fixes, guys. And I don't know where it comes from. There's gonna be toes stepped on, but Terry has the same problem. Michelle has the same problem. I have the same problem. The difference is, my guys are carrying daggone guns and wearing bulletproof vests to work every day. And again, I'll stack that up against any county employee that wants to come up here and argue that point, because what happens is, I never see anybody come over and apply in my place when I have openings. We wanna complain, we're all the same, and why not, we deserve the same thing. We're not the same. I'm sorry, we're not. You know, you guys know how the salaries are. You know how your salary is. Elected officials. I'm the only one compensated, I think, almost to the max, to where I can actually survive and live a life, a prosperous life and joy coming to work. I don't know how she does it, and what she makes. I don't know how she does it. Same thing with you guys. How much stress do you want to, how much stress are you enduring for what you make? I mean, day gone, let's think about it and be honest. So I'm here for the 144. I'm off it now. I'm here for the 144 for the new road officer. You tell me if you will fund my spot in 15, or we talk about it, I fill them both. But elections are coming, councils can change, and it's not that I don't trust you. You just may not be here to trust. You know what I'm saying? So I'm only gonna take, I'm only, I gotta worry about Billy a little bit, but I'm here to get that approved. We got a jail officer spot open. We sort of had a standing agreement that I could go ahead and fill those without having to come over here because of staffing issues. Again, $11 an hour for part-time help, that's a good, that's a good starting place to keep them. My jail officers start out 1062.
960.
What?
960.
My jail, my standard jail. But they get benefits, so I sort of see your argument on that. So I'm here to get that approved.
Yeah, we're dealing with two different funds now, don't forget.
I know we are. I know we are.
That's the problem.
I know, it is.
It's just the...
So I'm here to get the 144 approved for the new road officer. Unless you tell me I can do two, but we didn't advertise two, so I don't wanna do that, but I could come back and have no problem doing it. But again...
We don't need to advertise this, actually.
Yeah. But I would come back and ask for the other, but it's gonna take you all with that pesky camera on saying that we would fund my spot for 15. If not, I'm not pressing.
Do you know how much starting road officer you get?
1280, I just, 24 or 25?
25, 589.
25.
How much starting policeman you get?
25, 339.
I think they started 35, or 32,000, 35,000. And the money is great, that's great money, but they have three of them at least, that's the minimum, three working. The minimum. Usually four, sometimes five or six. I have one guy on right now, and has been since 2:00 AM today. I have one guy on. One. So...
I thought we talked about this, though.
So we just can't, we can't risk it, because we talked about that, and now that, I don't know, you got to been duly advised 100 times on it, so I don't know any other way to put it, as plain as I can put it. So we're gonna have, it's gonna have to do something. We're gonna keep losing them, and can't keep them. I mean, you can't hardly be mad at them, day gone. Can't hardly be mad at them. So any questions? I'd be more glad to field them.
You said there's approximately 10 road deputies, counting yourself and a few others.
10. Nine.
Nine?
If you improve it, yeah.
Okay. And you have one on duty right now at night. Is there any chance a few can be shifted off of days? I mean, is there that much more activity in the day that you would have to have?
Well...
You couldn't move a couple tonight?
Well, I don't have a, I don't have a couple, because one of them on days is, one of them on days is me, one of those days on days is Zach, and then one is our detective. Okay? Our criminal detective. So that's...
How many detectives you got? Two?
I have one. I had two. At that spot we cut. So again, we're, here we are with, our citizens want service, but we can't afford to pay for it, so something's got to go and cut. So when she leaves, we spread around some of those duties that she did. We took them over.
What are, what is your shifts doing, like?
Our day shift starts at 6:00 AM and goes until 4:00 PM.
Okay, so you have an overlap then from 2:00 to 4:00?
No.
No.
From 4:00 PM, the second shift, they work till 2:00 AM. And then third shift is 8:00 PM till 6:00 AM. I have an overlap of 8:00 PM till 2:00 AM. That's the only overlap we get.
8 to 2.
8:00 PM to 2:00 AM, yeah. So it's six hours.
Six hours.
That's the only overlap I have.
Okay. Oh, okay. So that's in the evening, though, right?
Yeah, we have this, when we go look at our, I mean, when we pull those stats to see where our busy times are, that's generally where it is on the weekends, Thursday night, Friday night, Saturday night, obviously, those are busiest nights. But actually, and then when we pull all the stats, our actual busiest time is from noon until 8:00 PM, if that makes any sense for you, as far as volume of calls. The most serious calls are at night, for as far as domestics, but the volume of calls is noon to 8:00 PM. Hence, we're there to help during those, noon till whatever time we decide to be home. They get off at 4:00, it's their, their 8 to 4 guys. So we, and we adjust some of their schedule around to be available. It's sort of what we're gonna have to do to fill all those overtime spots, because we open that overtime up, which is great, but I still gotta get people to work it, and running them down in the ground. That's why when we're so shorthanded, it's, it makes it unbearable.
There's no, there's no way that, that you, you can have part-time deputies, right?
Well, the city, if you went off the city's formula, so to speak, they, they go clothe them, they give them the clothing, the gun, the holster, all that, they provide them a car. Again...
And they still have to go to school, right?
Yeah. Yeah, they're usually policemen that they hire. That's sort of what they're doing. They're hiring my guys part-time at $15 an hour, which is about $3 higher than anybody else in a regular road deputy. And then they're prepping them, which is perfect. I mean, it works great for them. But I can't get, I can't fill a part-time spot in my jail at 962, which is pitiful to work in an environment like that, okay? She can't keep them in her facility with her amount of prisoners, or what are they, not contested?
Offenders.
Okay, offenders.
Clients.
Yeah, they, she can't keep help, and I got 130 prisoners in jail today. 130. 111 beds. So DOC sent out an email the other day asking if we, if they were gonna send out prisoners again. Well, I emailed them back, I said, sure, I'll take 50. And they emailed me back, said, you got 129 this morning, only 111 beds. I said, I'll still take 50. You'll give them to us. So we're not gonna, I don't think we're gonna get them, because we're over capacity now.
Well, I'll make a motion that we approve this 144 for, to basically replace the employee you lost.
Yeah.
I'll second it.
It's moved and seconded to approve the additional 144 for the road deputy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. The ayes have it. Motion carries.
Thank you. What about the other spot? Do we wanna wait?
I wanna wait.
We're thinking about, don't wait for that budget time.
Okay. That's fine. I'll see you after we leave your, I got something to show you.
Congratulations, bud.
Thanks a lot.
Good luck.
You stay up.
Good luck. Dave.
Glad.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Actually, you approved it the last night.
I'm getting told every day.
Just signed it.
No, I'm not going to. Thanks, Jim. Thank you very much.
Yeah, we don't actually...
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you very much.
Chris, luck.
Okay. Any patron concerns?
I got a question for attorney. They deal with the highway rights right now, and we're kind of in transition on trying to control what we're gonna do, you know? We obviously have recognized the problem that's been brought up. We're just trying to figure out what, what happens if something does, an accident does happen. We're obviously, I guess, still liable, even though we recognize the problem, and we're trying to just figure out what we're gonna do. Would that help us a little bit? Because this building, actually, this building has gone way before June.
Way before June.
When my company, checked this building out, we did a report on all the county buildings, and it was at that time, and that, we're talking five, six years ago, when it was brought up, it was all that, it was brought up. So this has been way beyond June, way beyond...
I mean, for a county, like, if there was a drive of business, it doesn't matter if you know or not, if you have what's found to be a dangerous situation, you're liable. For a county, which will put on notice that you have a potentially dangerous defect, you should be liable for any accident that happens.
So realistically, if something, if we know a storm, a bad storm can, we basically need to tell them.
No, because that's an act of God.
No, I'm, I'm saying, we tell employees to get out of the building, I mean, because there's potential that it could be a bomb.
Commissioners?
Yeah, commissioners, yeah, I was gonna mean commissioners.
I mean, if anything happens at that building, whether it be to, I mean, if it was a county employee, it could be a worker's comp, or if it was a citizen, it would be a regular tort action, but the county would be liable for any damages. I mean, really, there would be no defense, because it's, it's a known defect.
Even if you're working to fix it, we are still on.
Yes.
Okay.
All right. I mean, if, you know, in a perfect world, you would get everyone, like, put a yellow tape around it and say, you can't come in here, but...
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Is there anything else? If not, I'll chain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
I second.
It's moved and seconded, then we need to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The ayes have it? Motion carries.
I got it.
Strugatius.